Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of February 27, 2024. We call the meeting the Board at 7:00 p.m. If we would all rise for the Board to review.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
You can roll into me. I'm big enough.
Our first order of business is approval not required. The purpose of this plan is to divide assessors parcel 3-1B into two lots as shown for more college cottage realty trust and located at 12 South Main Street in the Residential Agricultural zoning district. Do we have anybody here?
Where is Saver?
Everybody's seat right next to the planner at the kids' table. We've got two seats. We've got two.
So I'm sitting here?
Yes, sir.
All right. So the mic will pick you up there. If you stand in front of the microphone, you're kind of locked with the screen. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Moore.
I think you all know me. I'm Saver Moore. I live at 12 South Main Street in South Carver. I'm here tonight to take my eight and a half acres of property and make it into two lots, a front lot and a rear lot. You all have copied the plans. There are three requirements that are regarding the property itself that have to be met to qualify for rear lot. The area of the rear lot is at least three acres. In my case, it's over five. The building line designated on the plan and width of the lot at that line equals or exceeds the number of feet more than required for street crimes in the district. That line is there as well, 150 feet. It bisects my property right here, but as you can see, my property gets even wider. So in parallel with this, it's probably up to 500 or 600 feet. And the third thing is that the lot, which is no wider or no less than 40 feet, and that 40 feet, I have 40 feet of front. So that's this lot right here, going from South Main Street back to my rear lot. So those are the three criteria for the lot itself. And then the fourth criteria is that the property has not been divided since 1998. And I think part of your package shows a deed that was issued in 2014 when my wife and I moved here full time, but it refers back to the property plan from 1978 when this property was first divided. So this, my entire property here, this footprint of the property has existed exactly as it is since 1978, so well before the 1998 date in the bylaw. So as far as I own the front, rear, and side yards shall equal or exceed those required in the district. And all the setback lines are here around my rear lot, and there isn't any issue there. So I believe I've checked off all the boxes for this, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any on what it is I'm trying to do.
Any questions from the board?
I believe I'm fine with it, given the fact that it meets all the requirements.
I agree with that.
All right. So the chair will accept the motion to approve the approval not required plan for assessors parcel 3-1B into two lots as shown for more college realty trust at 12 Main Street in the Residential Agricultural District.
I will make that said motion.
And I will second that.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. O'Dowd. Discussion amongst the board. Seeing none, Mr. Gasky.
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sodilo says aye.
Don Liam says aye, but I think it's South Main.
Yeah, 12 South Main.
Thank you, Senator.
Then I might have missed speak, misspoke. But Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
All right, thank you. An interesting thing I just thought you'd like to note, in investigating this property, it's been hand down since William Savory in 1850. It's never been sold. It's been handed from one generation to the next. So I'm kind of proud to be the steward of that. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yeah. So that's me. Saver, Saver Maine. So what's this one, Tom? This is where my people like to sell this stuff.
You can't see it from this way.
Do you have the request for continuance?
There's a driveway on the lot before.
Yes, yeah.
I'll see what happens. I knew I'd lose some. I can get that one right for me. Thank you. All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing. It's continued on the application of Weathervein at Silver Street LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3100, 3900, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 7 and 9 Silver Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 67, lots 4-3, 4F, in the Residential Agricultural zoning district. The proposed scope includes the construction of six new triplex residential townhouses consisting of 18 total units. There has been a request for continuance by the applicant. The chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Weathervein at Silver Street LLC until April 23rd. April 23rd, 2024, 7:00 p.m., Carver Town Hall, Room 1. Motion made by Mr. Gasky.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Do we have any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none.
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sodilo says aye.
I'm going to abstain.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. Our next order of business is...
The public hearing on the application of Plymouth Elks Lodge, number 1476, requesting
a site plan review pursuant to sections 3100 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 169 South Meadow Road in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 113, lot 7-0E, in the airport zoning district. The applicant proposes to construct a 2,520-foot square foot building with all associated parkways, driveways, stormwater management, utility landscaping, and appurtenances. So just, if you'll excuse me for a moment, this request for continuance that was in my folder was from last week or something?
For the Elks?
Okay.
Yeah, that was the 220 meeting, I think, yeah.
Okay. All right. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Right? Did you have that too in your folder?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Again, for the board is Robert DeWort here with Bracken Engineering. On behalf of the Elks Lodge 1476, I have with me tonight Paul Rubinsky from the lodge as well. And I would like to come back before you to further discuss the proposed development for the Elks Lodge here at 169 South Meadow Road. Just as a quick refresher, this is a portion of the airport property. This would be a leased area. It's not a standalone parcel. As we see here, it's on the sort of southwest side of South Meadow Road, across the street from Fairway Landing Road here. And it's just, it borders the property line of, or the town line of Plymouth and Carver. With the existing additions, not much change. We've received review comments from us and O'Neil, which I believe we addressed based on that. Here we have our existing additions plan. Again, this is a vacant parcel right now for this portion, this lease area of the parcel. We are proposing a clear good portion of it, most of it. The limit of work would be delineated by erosion control. Erosion control measures would be put into the catch basins onto the street and maintained during destruction. We have some pictures, just to refresh your memory for those that weren't on the site walk. Just showing what the existing land looks like at the moment. Whoops. As I said, it is cleared. Excuse me, not cleared, it is vacant. It consists there mainly of scrub brush, some scrub pines, et cetera. So moving on to the developments, then we do have a 52,250 square foot building proposed. One clarification I would like to make, and we can get more into that, I guess, on the utilities portion, but the building previously was going to be sprinklered. We've reviewed, and the architect has reviewed with current fire code, building codes that it actually doesn't need to be. So for the cost savings of that, they're going to forego sprinkling the building at the moment, at this time. But again, based on, again, additional comments received from Fuss and O'Neil, Fairway Minor on this page, they wanted to see some bollards added in front of the electric vehicle chargers, so we did add those. One item that they did mention was because we only have one driveway in and out of the facility, that they requested sort of a gate or access from the parking lot to the neighboring lot. Now, originally, we did request that this be a drive-through to that lot. The neighbor was reluctant to permit that. So we're not proposing that as a pass-through. However, a big change will modify the plans to create a reinforced turf area so that if a fire truck or an emergency vehicle does need to pass through that, they can. And what won't, any landscaping there can be refrained from. So I know the fire department and Fuss and O'Neil recommend potentially a gate there. I think we would be willing to do that, but don't want to gate it off and promote that it is an entrance to be used essentially, but to maintain, you know, just with signage that emergency vehicle access only. Some further comments from the review. They wanted to see some plain things specified for landscape areas. We have done so, specified a variety of needed plain things, including in the rear of the lot here, generally a good screening line along the fence of trees, but however, that ends approximately here. So in this corner, there's not much screening between the rest of the airport and this portion of the lease area. So that would, ideally, what we would like to do is during the clearing portion of it, take some of the smaller scrub pines, which match the existing trees there, and just transplant them over to that area to grow up and provide additional screening to the lot. In addition, the other landscape areas, we have specified out on the technical schedule for those. The other comment received was that the light poles we reduced down to 20 feet, we were able to reduce the overall height of the light poles to 20 feet, maintaining the previous lights we had spec. It still needs the required lighting requirement spec. Another comment that we did address for this is the facade of the building. I know because we had rotated the building around, the, you know, sort of back of the building became the front, and it was limited in terms of protrusions or architectural breaks. So as a result, we did add some faux windows to the side that would be facing the front, which is, you see on the bottom left there, the west elevation. So there will be some windows there. They have also added a potential sign location there, and that will be, will have to be addressed during any sign permanent down the line. So in terms of the utilities, again, because we reduced the, or we eliminated the sprinklers in the building, the four-inch water line has been reduced down to a two-inch domestic service. And one of the, one of the bigger concerns that Andy had brought on Fuss and O'Neil was the stormwater. However, Port Health specifies rainfall events based on a magnitude analysis of the Northeast Regional Climate Center for Tonnent County. So we did revise the stormwater calculations, and it did provide about two inches extra rain during a 100-year rain event. So the subsurface areas with the leaching pits basically here and up here did increase. So I think an additional pit was added to each one of those to accommodate that newer rainfall event. Additionally, a grease trap detail was added to the plan as well. In regards to, let's go back to the question, in regards to the grease trap, we did receive confirmation from the Plymouth Port Health that they have, you know, they approve of us connected to the airport sewer system. They have, they are aware of the project. Finally, it was requested that we do provide some turning analysis for the fire trucks, coordinating with the car, the fire department was able to get the information for the ladder truck, the largest truck that they have. And we've got two routes, routes that they can take. So in this one, they are able to pull into the parking lot, pull up, you know, back down here, and then pull back out of the parking lot. So that is one route. If necessarily, if there's, you know, if that does rely on the fact that cars park in that packed area, if there are cars there and it's unable to turn around, you know, we are showing that it can do a straight pull through across that reinforced turf area over to the ladder property and out. A couple of other comments that were made from the review agency, let me just go back here a little bit to the utilities plan. There was mentioned, because of the utilities crossing over the airport, you know, we have water coming off of here, and our electric comes off of the poles that run down here, that there be some easements placed on the lot. Because it's airport land and they're just leasing it, you know, it's difficult to provide yourself an easement, you know, to yourself essentially, because it's still airport property.
Does the airport have an easement for that?
There's no easement, I mean, for the power lines, there's no written easement for that. And then the water line that is coming off, that's essentially our, on the property, it's just on the Plymouth side. So no existing utility easements are in place outside of what could be argued by prescription. And then, so we're coming off of those easements. So the, you know, the airport is aware of the utilities there. However, there's really no, no way to provide an easement to themselves for the utilities, even though the Elks Lodge is leasing that area. And then I think finally, what was it? In terms of the traffic study, I know we did request a waiver for a traffic study just to provide some additional information on that. You know, this waiver was requested based upon the fact that this is not a heavy traffic use area. We're looking at minimal traffic throughout most days. You know, it's really just special events that you'd see high traffic coming in and out. And again, there's only 35 parking spots here, so it's not, even at its highest peak, there's not a lot of traffic going in and out. And it's generally at off-hours. There's no really other conflicting businesses that would be open at the same time that we'd be seeing these special events. They would either be on weekends or after business hours at night. So that's why we felt that the traffic study wasn't necessarily required for this project. With that, let me open it back up to the board. Do you guys have any other questions?
Just, have you provided a revised set of plans for the board electronically otherwise? I don't seem to have a...
We did, you should have in your books, planning, February 26th, that's where the notes are.
Yeah.
I only have the original one from... The date on it, 11/13.
Yeah, we dropped off some revised plans yesterday. That's how they file. That's my... Is that? September 15th.
Oh, there it is. One pond. So through you, Mr. Chair, do you have a couple of questions?
Please.
At your total capacity, while it's occupied during an event, what would the amount of people that you think you could hold?
There are 72 seats and 35 parking spaces.
All right. And the fire department does not require a sprinkler system, but what do they have for fire?
Sure, sure, there's fire extinguishers throughout the area, I mean, in the building. But I'll defer back to the fire department. But there's, by their performance, it appears that they don't need a sprinkler system.
There's a kitchen there, right?
It's a partial kitchen. It's a prep. It's not a full, there's no fryers, there's no stoves. It's potential for it to be a pizza oven, but that's about it. It's just areas for, if they have cameras on, or they can just prep it there.
If it's all right with you, I would like to hear the fire department tell me that they're comfortable with that many people being in the building without a sprinkler system. Not that I want you to have to have one, I'm just thinking about safety. I respect the fact that the architect says he doesn't have to, but I would prefer to hear it from a firefighter. And my other question is, so the west elevation, that's going to be facing South Meadow?
Correct.
Is there a reason why we can't have a fifth window on that side? And awnings? Well, you're stealing my thunder. Sorry, I didn't mean to do so. I figured we'd include it all in the same question. That's not fair. All my notes are here. You were looking at my notes. I was looking over your shoulder. So, yeah, I would like to know why we can't have another window there, especially since it's going to face the street, South Meadow, as our chair mentioned. It would be nice to put a little bit extra into that side as far as architectural renderings are concerned, maybe some kind of mansard over the windows or an awning. I don't mind that the south elevation doesn't have anything on it, but, you know, if that's going to be the side that's going to be faced toward the street, probably would be nice if it looked a little better than just an open box.
Sure. I mean, we have added the additional windows, and there actually will be some screening as well here. There's going to be shrubs, taller shrubs here, because there will be some AJack AC condensers against the building right here. So those eventually, you know, those are going to grow up to be quite tall. How do you feel about awnings over the windows?
And what percentage does that, the windows take up of that?
I'm not sure. It is shown on there. Not positive on terms of percentage of the wall area of those.
You have false windows, right?
Correct. Yeah.
All right.
And the only reason why we hadn't placed one, you know, a fifth window here was mainly because they would just get covered up by those shrubs naturally anyway. But we can provide awnings on them.
Excellent. Do you have the floor, Mr. Robinson?
Those were my questions.
All right.
I defer to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to go through Mr. Glynde's list here. You've covered a lot of it, so excuse me if I repeat myself. Special permit application?
There does need to be a special permit through the ZBA for the use because it is a drug-serving alcohol. We're in the process of submitting that now.
That should be provided to Fuss and O'Neil as well.
Correct.
You added the lot width in there?
We did add the lot width. It is 200, it's added to the layout zoning plan. It is 272.1 feet.
Excellent. And you added it to the zoning summary table?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm going to reiterate Mr. Robinson's statement about the fire department, because in their letter it says, plans indicate that the building will be equipped with an automatic sprinkler system. So the board is going to ask for further review from the fire department to ensure compliance. And we're going to ask that they, they and Fuss and O'Neil approve the turf drive-through. I personally don't see it as a problem, but I want to make sure it's up to engineering standards to make sure it handles the equipment.
Sure.
Did you indicate for Mr. Glynde, we are familiar with it, how the water system, how water is going to be provided?
I think that was based on, we had the four-inch, it wasn't very well called out on the original plan, that the domestic service type T'd off of the four-inch fire service coming in. Now that the fire service is out that, the line, it's the same, same path coming in, but it's just been converted to the two-inch service.
Okay. Mr. Glynde recommends a condition of approval may be required or verify approval through Plymouth Water Department, which seems bears they are going to be providing the water.
Yeah, they have been made aware of the project as well.
Mr. Bott, this one's for you. Town planner should confirm a certified list, but it is provided, notification's been issued. Mr. Bott confirms that it has. Signed permit application, go through the building department.
Mm-hmm.
So in regards to the traffic waiver, you should provide hours of operation and classification of South Meadow Road, et cetera. Is South Meadow Road classified as a major road? I expect it probably is.
It's certainly, probably, determined as an urban collector.
Okay.
That's a major road in nerd engineering.
Going in and out, and it's generally at off-hours. There's no really other conflicting businesses that would be open at the same time that we'd be seeing these special events. They would either be on weekends or after business hours at night. So that's why we felt that the traffic study wasn't necessarily required for this project. With that, let me open it back up to the board. Do you guys have any other questions?
Just have you provided a revised set of plans for the board electronically? Otherwise, I don't seem to have a...
We did. You should have in your books, planning, February 26th. That's what the notes are.
Yeah.
I only have the original one from... The date on it. Eleven thirteen.
Yeah, we dropped off some revised plans yesterday. That's how they file. That's my... It's September fifteenth.
Oh, there's this one. One pond. So through you, Mr. Chair, do you have a couple of questions? At your total capacity, while it's occupied during an event, what would the amount of people that you think you could hold?
There are seventy-two seats and thirty-five parking spaces.
All right. And the fire department does not require a sprinkler system, but what do they have for fire?
Sure, sure, there's fire extinguishers throughout the area, I mean, in the building. But I'll defer back to the department. But there's probably elements that they don't need.
There's a kitchen there, right?
It's a partial kitchen. It's a prep. It's not a full... There's no fryers, there's no stoves. It's potential for it to be a concern, but that's about it. It's just areas for... If they have cameras on, they can just prep it there.
If it's all right with you, I would like to hear the fire department tell me that they're comfortable with that many people being in the building without a sprinkler system. Not that I want you to have to have one. I'm just thinking about safety. I respect the fact that the architect says he doesn't have to, but I would prefer to hear it from a firefighter. And my other question is, so the west elevation, that's going to be facing South Meadow?
Correct.
Is there a reason why we can't have a fifth window on that side?
And awnings?
Well, you're stealing my thunder.
Sorry, I didn't mean to do so. I figured we'd include it all.
That's not fair. All my notes are here. You were looking at my notes.
I was looking over your shoulder.
So, yeah, I would like to know why we can't have another window there, especially since it's going to face the street, South Meadow. As our chair mentioned, it would be nice to put a little bit extra into that side as far as architectural renderings are concerned, maybe some kind of mansard over the windows or an awning. I don't mind that the south elevation doesn't have anything on it, but, you know, if that's going to be the side that's going to be faced toward the street, probably would be nice if it looked a little better than just an open box.
Sure. I mean, we have added the additional windows and there actually will be some screening as well here. There's going to be shrubs, smaller shrubs here, because there will be some A.J.C. AC condensers against the building right here. So those eventually, you know, those are going to grow up to be quite tall. How do you feel about awnings over the windows?
Yeah.
And what percentage does that, the windows take up of that?
I'm not sure. It is shown on there. Not positive on terms of percentage of the wall area of those.
You have false windows, right?
Correct, yep. And the only reason why we hadn't placed one, you know, a fifth window here was mainly because they would just get covered up by those shrubs naturally anyway. But we can't provide awnings on them.
Do you have the floor, Mr. Robinson?
Those are my questions. I defer to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to go through Mr. Glance's list here. You've covered a lot of it, so excuse me if I repeat myself. Special permit application?
There does need to be a special permit through the ZVA for the use because it is a drug-serving alcohol. We're in the process of submitting that now.
That should be provided to Fasen O'Neil as well.
Correct.
You added the lot width in there?
We did add the lot width. It is two hundred... It's added to the layout zoning plan. It is two hundred and seventy-two point one feet.
Excellent. And you added it to the zoning summary table?
Correct.
I'm going to reiterate Mr. Robinson's statement about the fire department because in their letter it says, "Plans indicate that the building will be equipped with an automatic sprinkler system." So the board is going to ask for further review from the fire department to ensure compliance. And we're going to ask that they and Fasen O'Neil approve the turf drive-through. I personally don't see it as a problem, but I want to make sure it's up to engineering standards to make sure it handles the equipment.
Sure.
Did you indicate from Mr. Glance, we're familiar with it, how the water system, how water is going to be provided? It was a...
I think that was based on, we had a four-inch that wasn't very well called out on the original plan, that the domestic service type T'd off of the four-inch fire service coming in. Now that the fire service is out that the line, it's the same path coming in, but it's just been converted to the two-inch service.
Okay. Mr. Glance recommends a condition of approval may be required to verify approval through Plymouth Water Department, which seems bears they're going to be providing the water.
Yep, they have been made aware of the project.
Mr. Bott, this one's for you. Town planner shall confirm a certified list, but has a provided notification to issue. Mr. Bott confirms that it has. Signed permit application, go through the building department. So in regards to the traffic waiver, you should provide hours of operation and classification of South Meadow Road, et cetera. Is South Meadow Road classified as a major road? I expect it probably is.
It's certainly probably determined as an urban collector.
Okay.
That's a major road in nerd engineering. I got a friend who told me that.
Proposed fixtures will be full cutoff luminaries?
Correct, yep.
They shouldn't be, the building shouldn't be lit up like Christmas after, after half hour after the building's closed. You provided elevated views of the building facade. Elevation views. I think it's number nine under zoning bylaws. You said the Plymouth Board of Health has weighed in?
They have. They have weighed in their approval of it.
Okay. I'd ask that that be provided to Mr. Bott, so we can send it off to Andy?
Andy, Water Department.
Add proposed plant material northeast corner of property to provide visual relief and windbreak from airport.
That was the screening I mentioned up here, just to provide any relief.
Okay, yep, all right. I see it on the plans, but for some reason I'm thinking that other corner was the northeast. Provide a planting schedule for Fasen O'Neil as well as the town. Put in the dimensions of the parking spaces?
We did add those to confirm that they are ten by eighteen.
Excellent. You mentioned that the pole height has been dropped to twenty feet?
It has.
Excellent. Bike rack?
We did add a bike rack. Oh, you should mention that, it's right. But it's at the main entrance here. There's a nice spot for it right there. That's enough to accommodate seven bikes for the thirty-five spaces that we have.
Excellent. I heard you revised the stormwater values?
We did.
Provide a copy of the PDES permit to the town planner and Fasen O'Neil prior to the start of site disturbance?
No, not provided yet.
It'll be a condition imposed. You added a spot for us to sign your plans?
Apologies, I did not. I can provide a spot to do that.
Okay, all right. I think that's one of the more important aspects that...
Apologies, typically I'm used to it being a stamp.
Adline work from all sheets to the legend, including the tree line.
That has been added.
All right. Perimeter sediment control?
That was there originally, I did call it out on the more directly.
Okay. I thought I had seen it previously. Typo in soil logs?
That has been corrected.
Excellent. Went through lot width. Call out to reference handicap parking sign detail.
That has been added.
Now, it looks like the handicap ramp is in front of one of the handicap spaces?
It's a flush area. In general, there's a, about between the space and the locked-off areas. This sidewalk here is flushed to the curb right here along this stretch, so they have access really at any point here. This ramp is actually going up to the rest of this sidewalk here, so if they had a wheelchair up in this area, they'd be able to get down here and then the ramp up there.
I just want to make sure that the person on the southern handicap spot will have available access to not have to wheel around or...
Yep, and they do base from the, you know, from the hatched-off area here.
Okay. You mentioned the bollards for the EV stations. Spot grades at all corners of dumpster pads?
Did add those, as well as the spot grades around the ADA spots.
And to access those?
And they access those, yep.
You added in the proposed gas line?
We did. That was a, the arrow pointed about five feet off, so I should shift that over.
Spot grades, landscape area to mitigate bonding within the log?
We did add those, particularly particularly up in this grassed area, so it allows most of the drainage to get down into that rain garden.
Excellent. Provide the details for fifteen hundred gallon grease trap?
And that was added to the...
You marked the utility line trenches?
We did add those correctly. I don't have the detailed sheet on my proposal here, but they were added.
Okay. Clarified planting approach for sediment for bay and rain garden.
We had that fairly well clarified in the details of it.
Yep.
Which says the, you know, the soil next up to be used and the general nature of the plants that are to be planted there. I think if Fasen O'Neil needs more clarification than I can give it to them, but...
They provided a, have you provided response to Fasen O'Neil in regards to...
We haven't gone itemized yet.
Okay, okay, yep. All right. So next to the rain garden, running along the parking area there, what are the proposed plantings for that area? I see two different types.
Say it again?
North of the building along the parking lot area for screening for the parking lot?
Oh, it's a mixture of rhododendron shrubs and, sorry, I'm blocking it for a minute, and larger hydrangeas.
Okay.
Should go there.
Evergreens, perfect. And I'm fine with that. As long as the parking screen, really. Awnings and other details to work out, but other than that, I think it's come a long way. Presented a very professional plan. So I look forward to hearing back from the fire department and have a further review from Fasen O'Neil in response to the updated plan set.
We can do that.
Yep, excellent.
And I'll put together a draft decision that by the way, next meeting in the interim, we'll have, that's within the works of giving your permit to develop. DVA for the special permission, because they don't want to hold you out.
A quick question. Where is the nearest fire hydrant? On the Plymouth side, couldn't the...
There is a hydrant across the street at the entrance to Fairview.
Is that active?
I'm not sure. I was out there and it looks...
If your water line is coming through the airport through Plymouth side, could you put a hydrant, even if it's on the Plymouth side, it would be right next to your property for adequate fire protection?
We'll look into it. There may be another fire hydrant available as well. I just can't think off the top of my head.
It's about three to four hundred yards.
Is it?
Down.
If you got the water line coming right to your property, could you put it...
Because I'd like to confirm the status of that one at the end of Fairview, because it looks like it may be inactive, but...
I think it was put there just in case whenever the Lord allows water to come through your garden.
Okay.
But if you, how close you could put one, even if it's two feet on the other side, it's telling the fire, then they're going to say, oh, time line, gang across. It may alleviate the fire concerns about the building.
I can assure you that the Carver Fire Department will not let someone open unless they're able to, uh, fire review architects, you know, people work from code, from the script of code, and typically people reading the same code, unless there being a different version, they come up with the same answer, but our fire departments, sure you got it.
And we'll, you know, we can bring up the change to that as well.
Lockbox for the fire department?
That would be included on the building, yep.
Emergency action plan?
There is one that is in place right now. It's out to, I think Robinson, you guys, to sign, but it was a draft of it.
Yes. Killed it out and sent it back to our square architects.
Okay.
Excellent. Do we have further questions or concerns from the board?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, the, yes. Is there anybody here from the public that has any questions, comments, or concerns in regards to the project? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Plymouth Alk's Lodge, number fourteen seventy-six, to...
On March twelfth?
Sorry?
March twelfth.
March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, room one, Carver Town Hall, seven p.m.
We'll see about the room. And you know, we were scheduled for room one tonight.
I still have to make it...
I'm with you. I'm with you.
Right. I will make that set motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sirdillo. Further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sirdillo says aye.
This is the one I want to see.
Yeah.
And Mr. Williams, you recuse?
Well, I recuse the stand. I'm not going to vote. I can participate as a member.
No, you just have to state it.
Recuse the stand.
All right. And Mr. Shea says aye. So thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
He's supposed to be, you're right, he's supposed to be sitting. You're right. Best practices. I'll discuss it with him after.
And just as a minor sidebar, the fellow who would tie on was my kid's Cub Scout leader, a magician, and now the president?
How many insulted rule is starting next month?
Insulted rule.
The grand poobah?
Almost like the grand poobah. And retired safety guy, so I'll make sure that place is safe.
That's my wife's job too, so thank you very much.
Forty years of safety.
Good night. Our next order of business is the request for extension for site plan review and special permit, three seventy Tremont Street, Rocky Maple Solar. Do we have anybody here?
Yes, Stacy Mennehan with Fields and Tom Stewart.
If you could...
Stacy, do you mind?
Yep. I don't have any questions. It's something we're familiar with. Eversource hasn't finished with their...
Group study.
Yeah, with their group study yet, so it's something we're familiar with. If you have nothing further to add?
No, I just wanted to confirm that the extension would be from the expiration date as opposed to from tonight, so March twenty...
You can request, but yes, because you've come in in advance, that's, we're more than happy to, yes. Well, I believe the board would be more than happy to. I can't, I can't lock them in on that. Excuse me. So the chair will accept a motion to a one-year extension on the site plan approval and special permit of Rocky Maple Solar Project to three seventy Tremont Street to March twenty-fifth?
Twenty-third.
I was adding an extra day, but March twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that set motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sirdillo. Do we have further discussion among the board? Seeing none, Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sirdillo says aye.
John, aye, says aye.
Then Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. Town planner notes?
None.
Yeah, I suppose. Where are we set on? Have we confirmed a public hearing date for, have we received the proposed changes for the codification system?
We have. Everything has been posted. There'll be an ad in the newspaper weekend. It's online right now. It's in the town clerk's office.
And is it easily understandable, in other words, if they change this to the...
Well, essentially, they changed the format and changing the numbering. So it's a hundred and fifty-nine pages of the zoning bylaw, just in a different, with a different numbering system on it. It's a lot easier to read online than it is to scroll through those a hundred and fifty-nine pages.
I didn't know if there are any typos that have been corrected or...
No, well, the folks from General Code, we'll be there to discuss that, but it's been fairly well vetted by them as well as by me and the town clerk to some extent.
I know they've been working on this for some time. All right. Previously, I discussed stipends for the planning board.
I have a question.
Oh, please.
I'm sorry.
No.
With all due respect, when you said five thousand dollars, was that for the entire board or was that for individual?
It was for the entire board. It's roughly eight hundred dollars per person.
More than what we're getting now?
Right, it would have brought it closer to what, and the whole presentation was about, and we've discussed this prior, bringing the stipend back to what it was prior to when we reduced it. It was reduced somewhere around eight or ten years ago to what it was. And my proposal would have been for one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per number and twenty-five hundred dollars for the chair. And then, of course, we have the six hundred dollar stipend, and really the numbers were what they were to reflect that we are giving a stipend to our...
Associate.
Yeah, associate member here. But I had planned on, I'm putting it on this town meeting, but again, that's, I feel that that's out of the question, and I had proposed for it to twenty twenty-five. So I wanted to ask Mr. Bott. Mr. Bott, can we vote on town meeting articles for twenty twenty-five?
No.
At what point can that be done?
When the warrant is open, so likely that'll be in December. But I think the most important thing is to make sure that I incorporate it into the budget document that comes out before town meeting.
Okay.
Because that puts it in the hands of the FINCOM.
Okay. And just as a general, is the board acceptable to moving forward with this with the numbers that I've stated?
I have thought about this and thought about this since you said it, and I had to write this down because it truly bothered me, okay? And so this is what I wrote. To Connie, with all due respect, I'd like to comment on your statement about the five thousand dollars stipend you would like to see on the agenda of this year's town meeting. I never even considered the stipend as part of the reason I desired to serve this town. As a member of several committees, it is my civic duty, not my own personal agenda, that drives me to do what it takes to fulfill my civic obligations to help this town grow and thrive following our bylaws and according to our statutes. So I'd like to discourage you from moving forward with this request. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that we are all up here for our civic duty and nobody's looking to get paid. But if I don't, as chairman, advocate in the best interest of the members of the planning board, then there's nobody else to do it, and that's my job, and that's why I'm proposing this, and that's why it will be up for discussion later on in the year in time to make it on to next warrant. I will set it in the agenda if I'm still chairman at the time. Otherwise, I will make the request that it be done.
Okay.
I see we all received a letter from the chairman of the finance committee, I will say, expressing his concerns. Mr. Bott, I believe disseminated it to the board? I, I saw an email with all the.
Yeah, I, I, there's been a few that have come back and forth.
I've only seen the one, well, I've seen the second one from Mr. Jermaine, but it didn't appear to be relevant, but.
Yeah.
I would like both of those entered into the record. I didn't notice that my response was disseminated to the board, so I've provided copies for the board members. I've already sent one to Mr. Bott through email, and I will have those entered into the record in regards to the discussion on the town meeting articles. And that's all that I have for town meeting articles. We, we will further discussion later in the year in regards to stipends. But the bottom line is that we're doing our civic duty. We put in a lot of work. It uses a lot of our resources and our time we dedicate, but, you know, our money is our money, and it should, we shouldn't be paying to sit in this position. All right. The chair will accept a motion to, please.
One thing real quick. So Tom, I noticed that on the, the map locations, we were talking about assessor's maps and everything else. We tried to review those according to what we have on, what the assessor's maps are listed on the town website. They only go up to map 61. And we have, I think we need to consider people to start renumbering because we have assessor's map 67 for Weathervein and assessor's map 113 for Elks Lodge.
So just to understand, so you're saying on the, on the assessor's website?
Correct. Yeah, I, I can show you.
I'm, I'm there pretty regularly.
Yeah, yeah. Like you said, I was looking, I was looking at things and I'd pull up assessor's maps and it only goes up to 61.
That's kind of weird.
Yeah.
They're very accurate either. If you click on one, it's usually not right.
I, I've been able to find everything. And the lots are labeled the same, but the maps are different.
Yeah, you might consider the merits of just going to the Carver GIS site. So if you go to the website, there's a link for the Carver GIS.
Okay.
And you can plug in an address or a map, a lot number, and owner will take you to that parcel, but I'll, I'll ask the assessor about that.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's just something that some way, somebody's maps, I think we should to, if there's a way that we can get, get that corrected between those of us. But yeah, other than that, that's all I found. All right?
Thank you. She's done an extensive amount of research. All right. The chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of 192024.
Who will make said motion?
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
I'll second it.
Second it. So under discussion on page two, it says EPA and it should be DEP. That was the only thing I, I noticed in regards to to that. It says, it's right here. In the last paragraph on page two, first line, yeah, EPA should read DEP.
How's it?
No, I'll copy that.
You got it on the email.
You don't have a copy of it. I got mine through email, so I don't have a copy.
You can have it.
Anything that you guys assigned the AR, the MIR?
If you want to continue it to next meeting. Give you a chance to review it. Well, Mr.?
No.
Review in the meeting minute. Yeah, if we want to continue this so that talk can get on the road. You're willing to continue it?
And that's the, which man said that account?
Oh, these are the ninth, 19.
All right. So I believe Ms. Sardillo, you made the motion. Would you be willing to rescind it?
Yes, I'm willing to rescind that motion.
And Mr. Robinson, you're okay with the rescission of the motion?
Oh, that was Dawn.
Oh, Dawn, I'm sorry, Dawn. Okay, so the chair will accept the motion to continue the meeting minutes for 192024 and 1232024 to the next meeting. Is everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Excellent. The chair, at this point, will, well, very quickly, there's still positions available for the upcoming town election. Mr. Robinson has taken papers, but there's, I believe the papers have to be pulled by March 6th at the latest and returned by March 8th at the latest. Please check with the town clerk to confirm those dates, and the chair will accept the motion to?
Three year and a five year position.
A three year and a five, yeah. The chair will accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Who will make said motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo, seconded by Mr. Williams, Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much for your time and have a good evening.